Good evening. I'm the Chair, Dennis Browning, of the Board of Appeals on Zoning. And I call this meeting to order. Secretary, will you please take role?
Yes. Board Member Browning.
Here.
Board Member Copeland. Board Member Nash.
Here.
Board Member Gale.
Here.
Board Member Forbes. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Board Members, I need approval of the minutes of the October 21st, 2021 meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any corrections or deletions on the minutes? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Also, I need a motion for the tonight's agenda, as printed before you guys.
I'll make the motion. We approve the agenda.
Second?
Yeah, second.
And is there any corrections? Being none, all in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for the agenda. Next on our agenda for tonight is we have asking for public comments. And before anyone speaks in general, this is separate than the public hearing that will be going on. This is just general public comments. And public comments, the purpose of public comments is to address the board. Speakers shall address their remarks to the board as a whole. Remarks should not be addressed to individual board members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the subject of their presentation. All such questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speakers shall not ask questions of specific board members. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and may only speak once. Speakers should limit their remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the commission. So is there any public comment out there? Just general public comment? Third and final time, is there anyone to speak to the board under public comments? Being none, do I need a motion to close the public comments? Then the public comments will be closed. We're now at new business. And first under new business is case number J 22-0151, Public Hearing Waiver on Separation Distance of Proposed Marijuana Grow Operation at 2700 Perkins. 2700 Perkins. And let me read this before we go through. The function of the board is to provide zoning flexibility. The action of the board can be an interpretation, which involves an interpretation of the zoning code text or a zoning district boundary. We may also issue a variance, which is an appeal to vary from the strict application of the zoning code. The meeting is videotaped, and it's very important that only one person speak at a time, and the audience observe respect for the speaker. When the appeals in which you are interested in is called, please come forward to the podium and allow the board a moment to review the material, after which you may be given, you may give your name and address to the secretary. After the appellant's presentation, anyone interested in the appeal may come forward. Give his or her name and address to the secretary. Please make your comments brief and to the point. All questions should be directed to the board and not to the appellant. The board will discuss the appeal vote and continue to the next appeal. Affirmative vote of two-thirds of the board shall be necessary to decide in favor of the appeal, the election. The action of the board is final. The only relief is through the courts. Please be advised that use and dimensional variances expire in six months from the date of this meeting. Thank you. So with that being said, we have public hearing on case J 22-0151. That is reference the waiver on separation of distance of proposed marijuana grow operation 2700 Perkins. Do we have a presenter?
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Joey Kedjbu. My address is 2207 Orchard Lake, Sylvan Lake, Michigan, 48320. I'm here on behalf of Marley Crops LLC, which has submitted an application for an adult-use marijuana cultivation facility at 2700 Perkins. Just to provide a little bit of context on this property, it's a roughly 80,000 square foot building that's been vacant for approximately eight years at this point. There really hasn't been any other interest or feasible uses that anybody has desired to use this property for during that time. The licenses sought are Class C adult cultivation facilities, adult-use cultivation facilities. The project in and of itself, if approved and moved forward, would consist of a full-scale renovation of the entire building, both the interior and the exterior. As I mentioned previously, the building's been vacant for about eight years. It is in the appropriate zoning district. It's in the M1 light industrial per the zoning code. And the property, the issue with the property that we're here for tonight, if you saw the report before you, is that it's within 1,000 feet of a building that formerly operated as a school. And per the zoning code, we're required to be outside of that 1,000-foot buffer for any sensitive uses that includes schools. The property at issue, which is the sensitive, or was the sensitive use, is located at 2435 Perkins. It's located on the opposite side of Perkins, and it's also divided by a railroad track that separates the two properties. That particular property has not been used for any use whatsoever for approximately eight years, particularly educational uses. As recent as 2019, you may have seen that there was different articles where a dead body was found on this property. It continues to erode and, you know, experienced dilapidated conditions. The future land use map for this, that was created in 2011, designates this particular parcel as a public use slash quasi-public potential use. In that category of uses, it could be used for a school, cemetery, library, museum, community center, government facilities. Ultimately, the point is that there are alternative uses for this property, given that it doesn't seem to be used or have any intention to be used for a school anytime in the near future. We have been in contact with the school district. We've tried to work with them and make different offers for us to acquire the property, for us to make donations of an alternative building that they could use for educational purposes. Unfortunately, they've declined our propositions. I have had discussions with the superintendent. A lot of it seems to be motivated by, you know, political motivations. In particular, the school board doesn't necessarily want to affiliate with anything that's marijuana-related or give the impression or optics that they signed off on a marijuana application, which is completely understandable. We fully appreciate their position. But at the same time, from a total economic perspective for the community as a whole, we're looking at renovating a building that's 80,000 square feet. It's going to increase tax base. It's going to bring plenty of high-paying jobs that pay way above a living wage. It's going to bring licensing fees to the city. It's going to bring improvements to the property that we're trying to improve and perhaps interest neighboring properties to become attractive for other potential investors, once we lead the way with these different improvements that we're seeking to incorporate into the property. You know, although we're here today going through the procedures and requesting this variance and seeking a spacing variance, we really don't believe that the spirit of the ordinance was intended for an applicant who's in our position to deal with requesting this type of variance for a property that's been vacant, shut down, and has no intended use for the near future. There was a brief that I submitted with this application, and it referenced various state courts, it referenced the adult-use marijuana regulations that are issued at the state level, and it defines school in a number of different ways. Each of those examples has one critical component, whether it's the state courts, the appellate court, or the adult-use MIRMA regulations at the state level. They all have the critical component that a school is only classified a school if there's active educational purposes going on. At this facility, there's none. There's been no indication from the school board that this is going to happen. And as recent as earlier this morning, I received a letter from the school district's attorney, Adam Walker, and I read in part, "While the school district's property at issue is not currently being used in a manner that involves a daily student presence, the school district cannot disregard the possibility that the property in question will again welcome students at some point in the future." To me, that's an acknowledgement that this isn't a school. It's not functioning as a school. There's no educational presence. It's not benefiting anybody sitting there as a vacant 20,000 or 30,000-square-foot property that's not being used for something that's, you know, a decade ago. In addition, if you refer to the brief that I provided, and I'm going to go to just strictly public health code and the Michigan Liquor Control Act, which has been in effect for ages. The Michigan Public Health Code defines a school, a school property, as "a building, playing field, or property used for school purposes to impart instruction to children in grades kindergarten through 12, when provided by a public-private denominational or parochial school, except those buildings used primarily for adult education or college extension courses." Again, nowhere in that definition would this particular property qualify as a school property. Going further, using the Michigan Liquor Control Act, which has been in effect for ages since, I believe, 1953, there's always been a buffer between liquor licenses and schools, so they've always had this same, you know, criteria to figure out what a school is. Their definition is "buildings used for school purposes to provide instruction to children in grades kindergarten through 12. If that instruction is provided by a public-private denominational or parochial school, except those buildings used primarily for adult education or college extension courses." Again, that definition clearly incorporates the dynamic of educational services being provided in K through 12 or alternative type of educational purposes, something that 2435 Perkins is not, currently has not been for the last eight years, and there's no indication that it's going to be used for in the future. The other thing that I do want to point out is, I believe this scenario is something that was contemplated by the zoning, by the planning commission and whoever drafted the zoning code. If you refer to the zoning code itself, section 153, bear with me, I'm going to flip through these pages. Section 153.606(c) is the segment that requires the separation distance requirement from a school that's within 1,000 feet. If you refer to the very next subsection, d, where it states, "Pre-existing establishments: A marijuana establishment shall not be in violation of the spacing requirements in this section in the event a school or other sensitive use was located less than the minimum spacing distance from the establishment at any time after a city license and a state license to operate the establishment were issued." In short, you could look at this particular provision and look at it two different ways. If the establishment was previously operating and the school came along, that wouldn't be an issue. It wouldn't be violative of the ordinance. The school could continue to operate, and so could the licensed marijuana facility. In this situation, we could get licensed today, because this isn't a school by any standard that we've been able to review. We could get licensed today. And if the school board's letters do follow through and five years from now, or two years from now, decide to reopen this facility as a school, there's nothing to prevent them from doing that. This language specifically contemplates the idea that a city license for a marijuana facility could be issued, and subsequently, a school could be opened or reopened in this case, and both could coexist. This was contemplated, and I think at the spirit of the zoning code, that's why it was in here, because there are plenty of vacant buildings. There are properties that are owned by the school board that necessarily shouldn't be considered a school at this point. Ownership of a property doesn't, you know, qualify it for that particular use in any regard. And if any of you had the opportunity to review the planning commission hearing that we attended about a month ago, several of the planning commissioners during that hearing heard me out, and they heard my associate who was with me, Zach Lerman. We provided these definitions. We provided the circumstances surrounding this entire application. And many of them on that commission that night expressed their belief that this school should not count as a school. Unfortunately, during the course of their deliberations, we also gathered that they believed that they weren't authorized to issue any kind of variance from their recommendation. And tonight, I believe that this is the appropriate board. I believe this is the venue, and you are the appropriate board that has the authority to issue this variance. I believe, Mr. Chair, when you were speaking, you said there's an ability on the part of the board to divert from the strict reading of this. And I believe this is the appropriate situation for that, from a total economic perspective, from a city perspective, and from a development perspective. I don't think that there's any reason that two buildings should sit vacant, unused, without any, you know, prospects for use outside of our desired use, when we can have one of them that's 80,000 square feet be redeveloped and be a complete asset to the community. For that reason, I would respectfully request that our petition for a variance be granted. If there's any questions or anything else I can answer, I'm happy to do so.
Board Members, do you have any questions?
We're in a public hearing.
Chair, you can't ask questions during.
We close.
Once we close it, then we can go back and ask questions? At what point can we ask him questions?
After the public hearing is finished, after all parties have had an opportunity to discuss.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yep, then we can come bring him back up? Is that correct?
Correct. I believe it's a motion to go out of the regular order of business, but yes.
Yes.
To discuss it, we need to go out of the regular.
To ask questions. To discuss it amongst yourselves, you just need to put the motion to approve on the table, discuss, and then vote.
Okay, we'll visit that when we come back.
Go through the public.
Okay, well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else then wants to speak on this issue? Anyone else? Just approach the podium, give your name and address to our secretary, because we're glad to hear, glad you're here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Michael Hayes. I am the Senior Pastor of the Nation's Church. My church is located at 608 South 20th Street in Saginaw, Michigan. My personal home address is 17 Sawmill Creek Trail, Saginaw, Michigan, 48603. I am the Senior Pastor of the Nation's Church, which is roughly about 200 to 300 yards from this particular vacant building that's being discussed tonight. As a senior pastor of this particular ministry, which has been inside our Saginaw community for well over 60-plus years, it just kind of disheartens me knowing that it will, as a ministry, being so close to such event that will take place, that will allow our community, our children, to be able to have to have that outside influence, you could say, as opposed to being able to lift them spiritually. My job as a pastor is to be able to bring empowerment, is to be able to inspire and transform our Saginaw community. I have been in discussions with the Saginaw School over the past three years, right before COVID, to be able, for my ministry, to be able to purchase or lease the vacant school, which is Heaven Ridge Elementary, which is located on Perkins, to turn that building into a youth center. We would like to be able to offer services for the youth for that community. We would like to be able to offer additional reading for, I think it's kindergarten through third grade. We would like to also be able to offer wellness for the children as well as for the community. We would like to be able to offer a daycare. We are, we have a licensed daycare within our ministry that will definitely be able to launch in that particular venue as well. The school board right now, I am in, once again, discussions with Superintendent Roberts to be able to either purchase or be able to lease out that school that's vacant. So there is a plan for that building that will allow our children, for the community, to be able to be in that building, so that they'll be able to learn, they'll be able to flourish, they'll be able to benefit from the services that my church will be able to offer. And I do believe I did submit a letter that I think you have as well.
Do we have a letter?
You can read it, or you can allow him to.
Does the board have a copy of that letter?
No.
This is the letter that I submitted.
When did you submit that?
I submitted this letter on, it's not a date on here, but it was last week is when it was mailed out. I don't know when you guys received it.
Thursday of last.
Thursday of last week.
Okay.
And this letter is addressed to the Saginaw City Clerk's Office, and it's from the Nation's Church Executive Board, and it's regarding letters to enforce ordinance, prevention, the occupancy of a recreational marijuana growth establishment. The Nation's Church, formerly known as Greater All Nations Prayer Tower Church, has served as a pillar in the community since 1963. The universal community has a long-found tradition of reverencing Christian values, and this is evident by the sheer quantity of churches that occupy our small community. Our ministry is deeply concerned about a marijuana company potentially occupying at 2700 Perkins Street. Our concerns are rooted in the fact that we intend for the youth in our community to occupy Heaven Ridge Elementary School once again. It is our endeavors to establish the Nation's Youth Center on this premises of the school, which will serve as a safe haven for our children and be placed where their physical, spiritual, and mental needs can be met. However, Heaven Ridge Elementary School cannot effectively operate as a safe haven when drugs are being grown and distributed in a commercial level just across the street. Is there ever possible the ordinance preventing a adult-use recreational marijuana growth establishment from occupying the property at 2700 Perkins Street would not exist? Further, while it may be true that the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act has made the recreational use of marijuana legal in Michigan, marijuana is considered a Schedule II controlled substance under MCL 333.7212(c) and remains illegal under federal law. Therefore, this is not a substance that we intend to allow in such proximity to the children of our community. We wish to make our position clear by expression that we understand that this entity has a right to engage in their business endeavors, and we have no desire to infringe on their rights. However, we do not wish for them to occupy from that facility at 2700 Perkins Street, the proximity between the potential recreational marijuana growth establishment and our ministry and Heaven Ridge Elementary School is of great concern, and this concern can only be redified by enforcing the ordinance that prohibits a adult-use recreational marijuana growth establishment from being located at 2700 Perkins Street. The Nation's Church stands with the ministries of our community and plead that the city of Saginaw enforce the ordinance and prohibit the operation of an adult-use recreational marijuana growth establishment from being located at 2700 Perkins Street. Our ministry has remained committed to the people of Saginaw since our inception 69 years ago, and we do not plan on changing our course. Best regards, Michael G. Hayes, Senior Pastor, Kimberly H. Horn, Board of Directors President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Bridgette Hayes. I am also from the Nation's Church, 608 South 20th Street, Saginaw, Michigan, 48601, and I share the address with Michael Hayes. I just got up to say that although our ministry has been in that community for 60-something years, we've only taken over the ministry within the last five or six years, and we have been diligently trying to make vast improvements in that community. We have shown interest in the Heaven Ridge Elementary, but once COVID hit, it kind of shut the plans down a little bit. But we have a very detailed proposal to the school board regarding some educational purposes that we want to use with that school. And it's not just for, just for a ministry purpose. It's because that community is such a disadvantaged community. There's a food desert there. Now, we're limited in resources. We don't have the resources that the Marijuana Factories have, but we have dreams of that building being used for a grocery store, because that area is just at such a disadvantage. There's not a grocery store within several miles of that community. And so for the sake of the Heaven Ridge Elementary School that we want to use for, there's some school activities that we want to do to help the school system, because as you all know, our second and third graders are very behind in their reading. And so we have a very detailed plan that we're presenting to the school board, representing to the school board regarding that matter, and our president of our board will explain that in more detail. But we also, as a ministry, would like to transform that community. So I am a wellness facilitator, and so we're taking the wellness practices that we've been using in our ministry, and we're introducing them to the community, just to teach mindfulness, to teach yoga classes, just to uplift our community. I think as a city, we're looking for improvement. However, maybe it won't bring in a whole lot of money, but it will definitely lift the spirits, change the mindsets of those in our community. So as you're making your decisions, we hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Horn. I'm the president of the board at the Nation's Church at 608 South 20th Street. I reside, my residence is 4721 Spurwood Drive, Saginaw, Michigan, 48603. And as Mrs. Hayes and Pastor Hayes have explained, we have submitted a proposal to the board that was submitted pre-COVID to use the Heaven Ridge facility to educate the community. Part of the educational plans included helping reading skills or improve reading skills of children in the second and third grade, as well as the parents if they should need it, writing skills as well for the children and/or the parents, and then life skills, career skills for parents that are looking to improve those skills to gain employment. And then, of course, the wellness training that was mentioned. And so to me, it's disheartening to know that drugs or adult-controlled substances would be sold, or not sold, but manufactured or distributed in a community where families are, where impressionable children are. You know, why that community? Why there? So I would like you to consider that we are in the process of trying to use the Heaven Ridge Elementary School for educational purposes, and we would like you to consider that controlled substances, adult recreational, for adult recreational purposes should not be at that location. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to address the public hearing on reference case J 220151? That is the waiver of separation distance of proposed marijuana grow operation at 2700 Perkins. Is there anyone else to speak? Third and final time, is there anyone else to speak on that? If not, I need a motion to close the public hearing? Is that correct? I, is it taking a motion?
Sumo, sumo.
I have moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can we then move from the order of business to ask questions? Do we have to have a motion to move away from the regular order of business?
You have a motion to approve first, and then we can discuss among yourselves or with staff, or move.
Motion to approve the request.
Yes.
Sumo.
And support. Any other further discussion on the motion? The motion is to approve.
Well, and now you discuss the application before you ask a board.
Okay, we're not voting on the motion.
No.
Not until after you hold discussion.
Okay.
And if you want to ask questions of the applicant.
Okay, now, okay. I just want to make sure clear.
Yep.
Do you, gentlemen, any questions of any of the participants?
I forgot to whiz by there and check out the building. Can that building be easily broken into? Is there, other than a door?
Oh, yeah, please step up there.
Okay, if we are going to ask questions of the applicant at this point, now would be the time for a motion to move out of the regular order of business.
So the other motion still stands.
The other motion still stands.
Now I need a motion to move out of the regular order of business in order to.
In order to ask questions of the applicant.
Ask questions.
You can ask questions freely of staff or discuss things amongst yourself without doing that, but to bring a member of the public audience back up.
Any member of the public audience we could bring up under this motion.
So we have to make a motion to?
To go out of the regular order of business.
Yes.
I have a motion, I have it supported.
Yeah.
All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have some questions.
Sure. Yeah. Now, I know there's probably some windows and everything. How are you going to prevent somebody from breaking in and taking?
So windows will pretty much be eliminated from this facility. There were plans that were submitted at the planning commission level. The entire facility will be brought up to code, but aside from that, we have the most stringent state regulations possible in terms of our camera system, security requirements. There are security requirements that require every 20-foot space outside of the building and inside of the building to be covered by a camera. We have onsite security who will be servicing the facility at all times, state-of-the-art doors, heavy-duty doors, commercial locks. You really can't get into this facility short of, yeah. It will be secure.
That was my concern. That's it.
The outside perimeter, is that designed to be fenced in or anything like that for the outside perimeter around that?
Um, often. Off the top of my head, I can't remember if the, Bob, do you know if the site plan's called for a fence on the exterior?
Okay.
I don't see it either.
In addition, this is, this has been referred to as a grow operation.
Correct.
Is that different than a retail storefront?
Absolutely.
Where people could walk in and buy? Can, can people off the street walk in and buy at your facility there?
No, the only people that are permitted to go into our facility are employees, owners, and the way the product leaves our facility is through a separate licensed, secure transporter at the state level. They have their own license, they are the only authorized personnel who can transfer product from our facility to the retail facilities.
So this is a wholesale, then, if I'm correct, compared to retail? I mean, as a citizen, can I walk up to your facility, go inside, and buy any of the product that you produce?
Absolutely not. No.
Could I say?
So I'm just asking. Go ahead.
Basically like the secure greenhouse.
Oh, yeah. I, I, I just need to clarify, and then I guess I want on the record to clarify later, that this is not a facility that you can go into and you, as a normal, a regular citizen, cannot buy there.
No, not a regular citizen.
A licensed person can come in with the transport and it has to go somewhere else.
That's correct. The transporter would come in, the minute they arrive, prior to their arrival, there's a manifest that's generated by the state of Michigan, it's sent to us and initiated by us. This transporter comes in, they have their manifest, we have our manifest, we're picking, they're picking up certain products that are going to be distributed to retail. Consumers are not allowed to come, end consumers are not allowed to come into the facility, there are no onsite sales that are conducted. Traffic is nominal in this, in this aspect of the marijuana space. Traffic is limited to just employees, it's, for simplified purposes, a manufacturing operation.
Yeah. And as my understanding, that you have approached the school board in, in order to buy the property that is in question?
We actually provided several options to them. We have, the, we have another property in Saginaw, which is in significantly better condition than the Heavenrich property. We offered to swap out and take that property instead, where they'd be able to utilize. We offered cash donations to something that they designate, or just directly to the school if they're willing to accept the, the offer, and we also offered to just buy the school outright from them, or the, the building outright from them, that's correct. They declined each offer.
Okay. Any other questions for the speaker? Do you have any other questions to anyone else?
Yep.
Okay.
Am I allowed to address just some of the comments that were made?
No.
No, no, not unless we asked you the question.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're, we're good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We need a motion to return to the regular order of business.
Motion to.
If I could, with the pastor's questions, pastor?
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that you approached the, the Board of Education for purposes of using that facility of the school in the future. When did you first approach them? Has it been?
We approached the school in February of 2020.
Okay.
And then they went right into COVID, in which our prior proposal was pretty much set aside. We have not had any direct communication with the school as of yet. Well, I take that back, I'm sorry, I did speak with the school board president a couple of weeks ago, and he did tell me, because I think the school were trying to do something else with that school during COVID, but it was not, they weren't able to do that. So he did let me know that that school was, was back open again in terms of our ministry would be able to either lease or purchase that property for the use of education.
So did they, they give you any formal documents or anything indicating you could do that?
No, not as of yet, sir.
Just a verbal.
Yeah, it was just a verbal acknowledgement that it was back.
And they're, and they're willing to sit down and negotiate with you? Is that what they're, the, the opinion you got?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Again, we were able to at least meet with the school board in February of 2020, we presented our proposal, and then COVID naturally took place, and then everything was pretty much put on hold.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a, well, I guess I can't comment. Okay, thank you.
No, no. Being none, no other questions? We'll go, make a motion to go out of our special.
Back into the regular.
Or make a motion to go back into our normal.
Make a motion to go back into regular order.
Second.
It's been moved, any discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're back into our normal session, in which we have a motion to approve the variance request on case J 220151.
So if there's any discussion to be had amongst the board, or if you have questions of staff?
Questions for the staff?
May I, may I ask the staff?
You can ask the staff questions now.
Do we have, did they see the communication from the school board, this board?
I'm sorry, say that again?
To Dr., from Dr. Roberts.
The letter that you have attached.
Okay, thank you. And may, and I would like to ask a question to the attorney.
Sure.
Is this a school, or is it not a school? What's the definition?
So I, I think that's the question that's before this board to determine.
Oh, we got to determine?
So the city's zoning ordinance does not distinguish between operating or not operating sensitive uses. So the question becomes, is a school a school if it's not actively providing education? Is a church a church if it's not actively providing religious services or, or the like? I think another consideration is we, in, in this particular case, we have a school that's not actively providing education at this point, and the school has conceded that point, but we would rely on the property owner's intent and definition of the use of their property, which I believe is, is before you in the packet. Another consideration is, you know, if, if the school were to begin construction on a school facility, while that facility is under construction, is it a school? Or is it not a school until the day it opens and students enter it? So that's really the question that's, that's before the Board of Appeals, and that will kind of set the course for answering these questions and interpretation of the zoning ordinance moving forward in the future.
A follow-up question.
Sure.
Then we're looking under, in, in what was represented to us, we're looking under the Michigan Public Health Code defined, so there, there's a definition that the Michigan Department of Public Health Code defines, and then there's also a definition that applies, that could apply through the Michigan Liquor Control, then both of those are state of Michigan identities, right? I mean, tell me.
Right, those, those are Michigan laws that have specific definitions as to what schools are, and as you can see, there are two different Michigan laws with slightly varying definitions. The Michigan law that we're operating under in this particular instance is the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, and MRTMA doesn't specifically define a school. What MRTMA does is establish a minimum standard if your ordinance does not provide otherwise. So MRTMA provides that local jurisdictions, such as the city of Saginaw, can put reasonable time, place, and manner sort of regulations into place, and our zoning ordinance does that. It creates these sensitive uses, says that these establishments have to be within so many feet of them. We also have other regulations throughout either our zoning ordinance or our licensing ordinance as far as hours of operation, or how these establishments have to comply with site plan requirements of the zoning code, things of that nature, things that we're allowed to do. If our ordinance doesn't otherwise provide for anything, then the MRTMA reference to the school setback applies, but it doesn't otherwise provide a detailed definition of what a school is, not, you know, in a similar manner that like the liquor control code might.
Okay. Any other questions?
Stuff for staff, was there any communication with any other neighbors in the area?
Everyone, every property owner and resident within 300 feet received a postcard, and then we also posted, em live and in clerk's office.
So, I mean, it was no positive?
Oh, responses? No, we received the letter that Mr. Hayes read.
Is there any other correspondence that have been sent to the office that we're not aware of?
No.
Because we were not aware of this one, even though you received it last Thursday, that we were not aware.
Yeah, but your packets went, your packets went out before that, that's why I didn't.
We were gonna.
It would have been read into the record had the speaker not appeared.
I, I, I understand that, but at the same time, we're giving this other document ahead of time for our review, but yet we weren't given the letter ahead of time for review, not even laying on our table here. So I have, I'm listening, but it would have been nice to have a copy of that, I could follow through, and I, and, and I, I, okay, so, all right, there's no other things before, no other correspondence. Okay, then we're, I guess we're at the point where we need to vote, is that correct? We have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Now, is this a roll call vote? And we have to explain our reason for voting that way? Is that correct?
If you vote no.
Either way.
Either way?
Either way.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Board member Browning.
I'm going to vote yes on the recommendation. It is my feeling that this vacant building that's been sitting there for such a long time does not represent a current edu, active educational facility, and so even though there is strong interest in it, I believe that, that could still continue to be, and by my voting yes would not restrict anyone else from looking at that building. So I am voting affirmative on the request for the variance.
Board member Nash?
I vote yes and affirmative, would echo what the chairman said.
Board member Gale?
I, I voted in the affirmative also. I believe I worked in that building, I think it was Grant Cisco. And I know the neighborhood, and I think it would be a big improvement in the neighborhood just to have activity that is not covered by darkness.
All right, the motion is approved.
Thank you very much.
The motion, the, the motion has been approved. Okay, our next item on the agenda is election of officers. I would ask the members to postpone that until another meeting when we have our other two representatives here for our.
Yeah, do you want to do it as a formal motion to approve, or motion to postpone until the next meeting?
Well, I need a motion, I, I understand a motion to move.
Postpone the election of officers.
Postpone election of officers.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the calendar, the 2022 remainder of the 2022 meeting calendar for the.
22.
Yep, it's for 22.
I, I asked for approval of the last, remaining months, September through December, the dates.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, then moved in support, any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Any old business?
None.
Yeah, from last October.
I had some, but I can't remember.
How does it happen?
What were we even talking about?
Every time I'm, I'm related to the properties.
I know, I don't know.
Well, I was worried that we were going to go into the newspaper thing again, but we didn't, so we're good.
No, the newspaper, that was way away.
Well, okay, that, I need a motion to adjourn.
All right, let me get.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion adjourns.